We are ready to start.
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Naigle.
Here.
Dr. Lachlan.
Here.
Mr. Lachlan.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Naigle. Solicitors report, Mr. Naigle.
I have no report yet.
Thank you. Legislative report, Dr. Lachlan.
There we go.
Thank you, Dr. Lachlan. So fortunate to have with us Mrs. Palmer Naigle this evening and she's going to give us an update on the preservation vision project. Welcome to Mrs. Naigle.
Thank you. We have a number of Art Conservation Trust members who are here and they're sitting around the table for the most part. With Mrs. Swiger, Mrs. Naigle, Dr. Tepper, Mr. Lucassio, Mr. Kralik, and Dan Hudson. Yeah, he belongs to us too. And of course, we have a number of community members. I think most of you know the work of the Art Conservation Trust. Out of 1991, it was born to oversee the art collections of the school district, to provide for conservation and documentation of the artworks, and most importantly probably, to raise the funds to do those things. Our work expanded to the publication of two editions of Unique Vision of Art. And you're sitting here in the center and we did provide major financial support for this. We're proud that we now have art collections in all three elementary schools and in the junior high school. We have visitors from all over the country and international visitors who come here to see this collection and they say, "You mean this is a public school?" And we proudly tell them, "Yes." We recognize that this is possible because of your support and because of the support of the Greater Latrobe Community, its foundations, and its corporations. Some of you then remember that several years ago, I came here to tell you about a major campaign that the Art Trust was going to undertake. We called it Preserve the Vision and we set out to raise $150,000 to fund the project. So today, I'm here to tell you that we more than succeeded and the three goals that we wanted to achieve have been met. And as so often happens in the Art Trust projects, we ended up undertaking far more than we had planned. But I want to tell you about the three. First, we determined that all the paintings of the special collection in the senior high school would have their glazing replaced with UV plexiglass. The new plexiglass will protect the works from fluorescent lights and sunlight and will also be safer in an educational setting. This goal has been met. We also continued our program of conservation and documentation. Now, we can't control the environment here and we're in the school and we can't have museums staying. So we continually emphasize conservation. We're very fortunate that we have the professional conservator Christine Dalton, who also works for the Warhol. So that's the level that these paintings and all the works are taking care of. She's worked very diligently these past three years. And you have a paper in front of you. If you turn to the color page, you will see before and after of the painting survey. If you look at it before, it looks very nice. But just when you look at it after, after it's been cleaned and any other conservation work done, you're seeing it as it was when the artist easel. And in addition, while the works were removed from their frames for conservation after they were concerned, then John Lee Naigle photographed the entire collection with state-of-the-art equipment and we now have it documented in a number of different ways, including digital files that allow us to use the images in many ways. This goal has been met. The third goal developed when the Preserve the Vision progressed. We realized we had protected the works with conservation. We had documented them with photography. But we also had file cabinets filled with files pertaining to the collection. There are 77 years of papers, newspaper clippings, photographs, letters, and a number of other things. And this material was beginning to deteriorate. We received seed money from the Latrobe Rotary Club and we were able to initiate a professional archiving program. Nicole Danforth has been named as our archivist. We worked with Emily Uren, who is the archivist for Fred Rogers Center, and she helped to set up our system. The first work done was the files of the more than 200 works in the special collection. And Jessica's here, Jessica Golden's here now. And she's going to tell you what this means for the students and faculty and for the greater community and for scholars.
As Mrs. Naigle stated, there were numerous, numerous files that she has graciously been keeping in her home. And on occasion, here in the school, students might want to do research or they're writing about a certain work of art and they want to learn more about it. Or our social studies department is looking at a series of paintings for their WWII significance and drawing parallels with what was happening in time and what artists were creating. And Mrs. Naigle was always really gracious about sharing files and bringing documents here to the school. But through the archiving process, for each painting in the collection, and now there are over 200, we created a Word document that serves as an index for that file. And in addition, so it's tremendously useful because now we have a series of Word documents that you can query and search. And they've been highlighted with key components that are in their files. So if there were newspaper articles about that specific artist, they've been scanned, which preserves them because they are deteriorating. We've removed all of the files from their current folders and put them in acid-free files. And to our best, we put them in an acid-free sleeve, if we could, to try to protect any old photographs or sketches that an artist has done. So now that index can live here at school and be accessible for our student body and for our faculty. And then they have access to some of these scanned documents immediately. But then if they wanted to look at a book that artist is featured in, they have reference to that and then we can put them in touch with the actual files. And I just want to note, there are numerous, numerous files and Mrs. Naigle did a tremendous amount of work to remove paperclips and staples and to try to get these things accessible. Initially, we thought, okay, we can just scan all of these documents. But it's kind of a labor-intensive process. You really have to know what you're looking at and what it means. And so Nicole, having worked here for the school district for several years and being close to the collection, she was able to draw those connections. And the handout in front of you is one of the really wonderful things is to read a letter from an artist after they've been notified that student council is buying their work for the school. And I just think it's so remarkable. This painting, The White Cloud, by George Soder, is probably one of our most well-known artists in the school and part of the collection. And he's writing to Mr. Beatty, the student council advisor, saying, "Your letter of yesterday at hand, many thanks for the check of $150, covering the amount which we agreed upon over the telephone. I was very much moved to have the student body want my work and pleased to be represented in their collection." And so this is new, this artist's career. He's very well-known and I know, go home and Google him, you'll find out that recently, one of his works was featured on the Antiques Roadshow. And so there are so many stories that are part of these paintings and we have a wonderful catalog. But those stories continue to grow even after we've printed the catalog. And so it's just really wonderful when I'm speaking about, okay, what can I tell them? How can I tell them how important? How can I tell the board how wonderful the archives are? And I was looking at Elizabeth Paeslett and you'll soon see that the work was featured in this year's art gala. And I just did a quick search of Mrs. Paeslett and I was able to look at her file and I was reading correspondence with her children, her obituary, and her artist questionnaire where she was so moved. She was a former student of Latrobe and she hoped that students would feel a moment of peace when they look at the vast ocean, we call it Atlantic, and that they will have a positive emotion when they see her painting. And so to see how deeply the artists feel about their paintings and being able to share that with students is, we're very excited about. Very excited.
I will not say that this last goal, the archiving, was complete because they just started. She's done 200 files. We have four overflowing file cabinets waiting and more material comes in every day because it's like seeing an obituary in the Pittsburgh paper, that's immediately cut out for the files. And I wish we could tell you some of these stories. Come on tour tonight, I will. But I want to tell you, we told you we would do Preserve the Vision and we did. And I want to thank you for your support in the project and for your support in all that the Art Conservation Trust undertakes. And there's one more thing. We have for each of you, your invitation to the 2013 Arts Gala. And if you open it, you will see Elizabeth Paeslett's painting. And it will be quite a celebration, it always is. It will be special to share where our new Latrobe Arts Center, we hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Naigle. We're so fortunate to have you and we're enthusiastic for this project. Thank you so much. At the beginning, at the beginning of the new school year, we give the opportunity to students representatives. And this evening, we have with us Adam Martin and then the group format. And they will be our representatives for the 13-14 school year. Welcome aboard and you're up for the student.
Hello, nice to see you all again. Thank you for having us. I'm happy to talk about the meeting boards that were installed at the junior high. As many of you know, every classroom in the building has been installed with a meeting board. The teachers are trained on how to use them and many, if not all, have already begun implementing them into their lesson plans. Students also seem to enjoy learning in this way as they allow for more engagement. Here's Adam to talk about the high school's first day of school activity.
On the first day of school this year, student council organized an activity to promote meeting with people and interaction among different grade levels. To start, kids that graded, little small paper squares to reflect one of their interests. And then they were organized into groups of about fifteen kids and organized this circle in which they each went around and said their names and what was on the square. And the squares were turned into student council representative and eventually made into a larger piece that will be on display somewhere in the senior high school. But inside those groups, the students were encouraged to play a rock-paper-scissors tournament in which the loser had to root for the person who beat them, eventually getting around to one big group where half of the group was three, for one person, half for the other person. And once that was over, the winner of rock-paper-scissors tournament received a free drink voucher at the student store. And eventually, the kids were divided into groups of three with one person from each grade level and then went around on this board in the school in which the upper classmate shares and the lower classmate are helping the other classes would be. And overall, it was a success. A lot of students really enjoyed it and they got to meet some new people.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Any questions for the students this evening? Thank you. Second item, enrollment report, Mr. Frankpitt.
Just two things on the enrollment report. We have kept an eye on the kindergarten enrollment that we talked about. If you look at the kindergarten enrollment from this month as compared to last month, it did go up. The number is a little bit misleading. The number's showing at 114. In reality, that number is lower than LES and that's the enrollment I'm specifically talking about. We have three students at LES who have not shown up for the first three days of school and their parents have indicated that they're not coming to school this year. So we just need for them to come in and do the paperwork to officially draw them. That number will go down. Also, Mrs. Haller has two students in kindergarten that are enrolled in ECAT Academy. They are showing as being, or students which they are, they're not sitting in classrooms. So when we look at that number, we still feel very comfortable about our class size in kindergarten. But when you look at that number, in reality, it's actually five students lower than what it's showing on the sheet. The comment about ECAT Academy just brings me to a second point. I just want to note to the board that we were successful in bringing back four or five, I can't remember the exact number. Sherry, how many did you have exactly coming to your building?
From Cyber.
Yes.
Four.
Okay. We have five kids that have come back to our Cyber Academy just in the elementary this year from outside cyber school. So when we bring those kids back, you're looking at $7,000 a kid back into our school and not going out to one of the men in cyber. So I just want to bring them to those two.
That's great news. Thank you very much, Mr. Frankpitt. Questions for Mr. Frankpitt this evening? Educational programs, Dr. Tepper. Adam, let's have introduce Julie Lloyd from Harvard Service Department who is going to give us the service update. Good to have you, Dr. Tepper.
Good evening. And this time last school year, I stood before you and gave you a big update on the national school lunch program and the new federal regulations that we had to abide by. With those new regulations, there were changes. Changes to the way that I planned the menu and ultimately what the students were offered in the school cafeteria. And just to recap what those changes were, they were the increase of whole grains offered every day at lunchtime, the larger portions of fruits and vegetables, the vegetable side fruits that we all love, the legumes, the green leafy vegetables, the sarchy vegetables, as well as the red-orange vegetables. We also started lowering the sodium in school lunch meals as well as just being creative and finding ways to incorporate these new regulations into schools that the students will be working. So since then, we've been working really hard and maintaining the regulations and starting into the next phase of the regulations which started this school year. But in March of last school year, I submitted the regularity of school lunch menus to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for certification. And in June, I was notified that we passed the certification process, which leads the district is that we are recognized as a school district that is compliant amid these federal regulations. So it's a really big deal for us. So I'm very excited to be here tonight to share that information with you. And also, in return, we got additional reimbursement to support our school lunch meals. So I'm very happy to share that. We will continue to maintain those great mandates for this school year. So into this school year, 13-14 school year, we're in our next phase of nutrition regulations. The biggest change of this school year is juice. If you remember last school year, we changed the juice from eight ounce carton juice to a four ounce serving. And we did have to be more consistent with the serving size of all of the fruits that we offer. So in doing that, we marketed more as a fruit choice versus a fruit drink. Okay? So when we did that, there was no regulation as to the combination of fruit that the kids could take. Okay? So the change this year is actually twofold. So when we look at the elementary level, they were offered last school year a half a cup of fruit. They could take a juice, a piece of fruit, fresh fruit, or a half a cup of canned fruit. At the secondary level, they are offered one cup of fruit. So they could take any combination. Two fruit juices, two options of canned fruit, one of each order they wanted to do. This school year, they changed that. In order to offer juice every day to the elementary students, we have to offer them one cup of fruit. Similar to the secondary level as we did last year. So the students actually could come through at the elementary level and not only just choose one fruit, they can come through and take a juice and a piece of fresh fruit. And the reason behind that is to encourage fresh fruit. Because what we saw was, or I guess what the state saw, is a lot of students just taking juice. We want to encourage fiber eating nutrients from whole fruit. So at both levels, we are now serving one cup of fruit to the elementary and in the secondary case. Now, the other part of the regulation is now there is a regulation for the combination. They are no longer allowed to take two juices. They have to take a juice and another fruit. It actually was pretty well-received by the students. I thought we would have a little bit more discussion with the secondary kids, but actually they caught on pretty good. And elementary kids are certainly happy to have more fruit on their tray. Other than that, we're moving forward with the number of grains that we offer the students in a day. Last school year, we had to have half of the options as whole grain rich. Next school year, we have to be 100% whole grain rich. So what we're doing is we're modifying some menu items that we have, some recipes, and bringing in some new products to try with the kids to move forward to next school year. So that's where we are with the second phase of lunch. With breakfast, we are on our first phase for breakfast. And the biggest thing for breakfast this year is signage and education. So what we developed is this lovely poster that you will see in all of the school cafeterias to kind of educate the students how to build a breakfast. So if you see at the top, this slogan is, "What we choose for breakfast today." And on the left-hand side, you see the mic, plate, which we're encouraging the students to build their plate accordingly. And as you see, you can start by building your breakfast with a milk. Then you choose a grain or a protein option for breakfast. And then finally, build your plate with fruits and vegetables. And they are encouraging vegetables for breakfast. We haven't gotten that far yet, but we'll see how the kids receive that. And ultimately, what the students want to have on their tray are three of the four options that you see here in this picture. So we're offering basically the same offerings every day as we did last year. As new items come about, we will introduce those. This school year, they come up with a new breakfast, oatmeal breakfast cookie. It's called an Uber, the ultimate breakfast round. And just because of the name, it seems to be a popular item this year. And that would be a whole grain options for breakfast and they would have a fruit and a milk with that breakfast. In addition to signage, half of the whole grains at breakfast have to be whole grain rich. We have to start introducing some vegetables for breakfast. And that's basically the first phase of breakfast for this school year. Next school year, they'll have a new phase for us to implement. Any questions with breakfast and lunch?
Since the new regulations have been, how many students have opted out of it for lunch?
I would say about 8% of our student body.
What is the overall percentage of students that are using the cafeteria as opposed to current classrooms?
Out of 100% of our students, we are serving, I'm giving you rough numbers, about 66% of our student body is still eating with us.
Okay, so it used to be 68 and we're now at 60. And what's the price on the lunch?
At the secondary level, it's $2.40.
How much does that as a federal subsidy?
Well, it depends on if it's free, if it's a free or reduced or paid student. I can give you those figures.
So that's our cost. That's the cost of student.
If they're a paid student, correct. If they're reduced, they pay $0.40 and if they're free, they're free. And the last thing that's new in our department is the breakfast basket. Or, stop on breakfast, the birthday basket. I have an example of a birthday basket in the back there. In 2005, when we implemented the wellness policy, I marked it for the breakfast basket. Sorry, the birthday basket with elementary students. And it kind of fizzled. So I wanted to bring it back to life this school year and really give parents an easy way to bring in birthday celebrations or really any celebrations in the classroom. We've had some marketing baskets out for kindergarten orientation. We had some baskets out for open house last week. I have my first order coming in for next week, so I'm very excited about that. I put a couple of different options on the order form. There's lots of ice cream, lots of muffins, lots of cupcakes. There are vanilla bars, there are blue fish crackers to promote healthy eating and really to do a service for the parents. So we really hope that with some more marketing and to push the birthday baskets that will have more of a wellness push on the classroom front.
So moms can't bring cupcakes to school anymore?
No, they definitely can't. It's just a healthier, more convenient option for them.
Start a panic. One more meeting in Harrisburg.
And the baskets are reasonable. The items are priced individually around $0.40 to $0.60 depending on what the item is. And it's personalized. So when the parent calls, we really, they can order off of the order form if they have something that they specifically want, like one next week they were green, one's blueberries. So we'll get some blueberries and specialize a little child, have a personalized card in there for the kid, try to make it a special event for that. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Thanks.
I'm Amy D. Do you have a list there for approval to move on to agenda and next week contracted services for the 2013-2014 school year? These look like ones we do every year. Do you have any comments?
The St. Vincent College intervention project, every year, the Civil Company Authority alots a certain amount of money to the district for services and then we budget a certain amounts to provide equitable programs to all the elementary schools and the junior high schools. Transition work, service agreement is a secondary alternative to the EWC TC option for students with more significant disabilities. NHS service agreement is at Cecilia, on Cecilia Road, is for special education students who are not served in our district. Same, the same thing for NHS services agreement that's in Greensburg, only one is more autism-based and one in Greensburg is emotional-based. This year, we are contracting with the IU for our elementary English second language services. And the last item is Presley Bridge Special Education Services. And again, that's for students with emotional difficulties.
And that will be on your agenda for approval next week. Amy D., we have a curriculum committee meeting next Tuesday at 5:30. Of course, anyone's welcome. And Amy D. also on your agenda will be approval of the New York Man trip. That ends my report and then we'll turn it over to Mrs. Alden for final.
Thank you. We will have treasures reported in the bills on the agenda. Next week, in there for the attachment, the letter talking about the GARRS B45 evaluation and why the one that we're paying for is the right one. Do you want to say anything about that?
Sure, just the GARRS B45 just requires the school district to place in the financial statements other closely related benefits that might be offered to employees sort of as a long-term liability. We're required to have this evaluation done by an outside third party over two years. The first year when we Uh, the first year when we did this, Westmore County went together as a consortium, did an R F P, uh, Willis, the group that we've gone with, came in at the lowest price. In addition, because all the districts, one of them, they gave us a ten percent discount, they've been holding that for several years, and once again, they're holding that price. So, um, that's just a quick summary.
And then the, the finance committee meeting minutes, uh, an attachment tonight, and we will be meeting again the first Wednesday of October at eight AM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Proprietary supply, Mrs. Cozal.
I'm probably as excited as the previous two speakers in the conference. You have buildings going up by the ground. Uh, we have roof repair on your fieldhouse and your press box, so we'll start roof structure, uh, actually started this week, so we have roof sheeting, we have roofs being built, and, uh, brick veneer going up. So your, uh, G C Kirkland Sons, uh, with their subcontractor Marsha's, uh, proceeding ahead of schedule as far as the masonry work and getting the roof on your buildings. Uh, site work has been complicated and troubled sometimes with the recent weather events you've had. It seems like they broke the record each month, but we've had a abnormal amount of rain, this one, and a severe storm on the twenty-eighth, uh, which had three inches of rain in an hour, uh, which affected a lot of people in the metro, but also affected the destruction site. Uh, significant amount of flooding. Uh, the track, uh, was delayed, uh, preparation of install because of, uh, water next system line on the track. We had that cleaned, uh, it was wrapped up, uh, today, and they'll be painting the lines this week, so it'll be completed this week. Um, also, your front parking lot is a ninety-five percent completion, uh, lacking the new landscape, which we're going in and seeing as well. U M T I continues to provide oversight on how it goes to work on the site sanding type line. Uh, there's been no issue with that since that, uh, came about, but, uh, the progress as well should be completed by the end of this week. Uh, also, the generals of your, uh, electricity, you know, moving just fine, ran it, your H K C contractors are moving well. All in all, we're moving well. Uh, weather's always continued to be an issue, uh, but overall, things are progressing very well. Wanted to bring up, uh, an item for the agenda for next week, uh, some changers that came about. Uh, one I want to make a clear note about is, we came across the existing infrastructure, uh, with the rain events that was deteriorating, and it was causing issues on the hillside, and basically protecting the future asset, which is the field and the track. Uh, we have asked custom contracting to replace a storm standard, or a storm sewer line and a existing, uh, catch basin storm line in the parking lot. So that'd be one of the changers, uh, coming up next, uh, the agenda, uh, for next week. Uh, some other ones, there's some minor things that came up during, uh, construction. Uh, we're, we've addressed, uh, the initial costs, we'll add changers, but, uh, nothing outrageous that would affect the long-term budget. Um, as always, I provided you work as far as contract completion, as far as the billing. Uh, all projects are provided a payout in this month. Again, everything's in order as far as the report. Um, and as always, I give you background information on changers in the drawdown, updating, updating as far as cost of project. All in all, moving well. Uh, it's getting exciting, this building's starting to take shape, and hopefully getting close before we do finishes and get lockers, uh, in place. Uh, the field, I believe, and the track will be utilized by students for practice starting next week. Uh, we have put in just to separate construction activity from the field, protect the students and the athletes. Uh, do ask to remind all of your public and your parents that this is still a construction zone, uh, to be careful, um, when picking your students up. Uh, as always, your athletes, be careful as well, traveling to the field and back to the school, so. All in all, going well, uh, it's nice to notice, but we're still proceeding very well, so. Uh, any questions?
You're just the proof face. So next week, the changers will be agenda, our property supply committee meeting minutes are an attachment, and there's a, the date for our next property supply is actually October the thirtieth.
And you, Mrs. Cozal, student activities and recreation, Dr. Lawton?
There's a different page on the log in the senior night dates from Girls and Boys Club for Cross Country Film Talking and Soliball, and we've already had the, um, cheerleading band football, which we set together, which I thought was.
Thank you, Dr. Lawton. Community relations, Dr. Zorch?
The meeting minutes for the, uh, the charity park recreation are in the, in the attachment. And there's a memorandum, memorandum of understanding, fair of the charity partners in education correlation, that we have to go on next week. The general items of the attachment under I V.
And, and hi, Mrs. Golden is here, and she can certainly address, um, remembering of understanding and, um, its inception and, and, uh, where is that?
Um, the, I attended, uh, in the spring, the Conference of the National School Foundations, and, um, in some of the sessions, they were talking about an M O U and M O U with your school district, and so, um, and we didn't have one. Um, so the foundation, we set about to do some research and to drink, for you, and create our own M O U that I think outlines, um, really truly what the foundation's purpose is, is, it's a new foundation, and, and in that document, you see our mission and purpose and some things when that foundation was first formed, they weren't really individualized or flushed out. So now that the foundation has legs and it's, it's growing and doing very well, um, we wanted to, to bring this before you, so there's a very clear understanding of what the foundation is doing in the community, um, what its goal, purposes is, to continue and enhance the graduate school's goals and increase opportunities for students. So hopefully it, it assures the board what the foundation is doing and the work that it's doing, but that it also seeks your cooperation in its activities in the community. Um, so and I think, um, it was reviewed in part by Brad Smith, who is an attorney on our board, and I believe Mr. Nagels has also reviewed the document as well.
I guess it's just sort of a matter of fact, for the school board directors, it's part of the memorandum.
There you go.
Been after that for a lot of years, Dr. Zorch.
I'm working on it, it's pretty honest, but I'm still asking.
Since then, what? You're doing a good job, Mike.
I want to ask you and this boy if there was bacon as part of the, uh, the bacon. That's it, I, I have nothing else.
Thank you, Dr. Zorch. Uh, Westmore, Westmore and intermediate unit, um, on your agenda for next week will be, um, a resolution to authorize joint purchasing consortium representative and alternate, and, uh, permission to advertise jointly as a member of the W I V, the joint purchasing consortium for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year.
Yeah, and those are, so we participate in the purchasing for diesel fuel, paper, and, uh, both, uh, Mrs. Glazier and myself would be the, uh, the authorized representatives as we have been this.
Okay, thank you. Any questions about any of that? E W C T C Joint Operating Committee, Mrs. Cozal?
Yeah, there's a summary of the last meeting's actions in your agenda.
Thank you. Um, Board Policy, P S B liaison, Mrs. Elder?
Thank you. Uh, you all know that your places is a copy of what we're not good for doing anymore, and, uh, it was stapled together, but I asked Connie to do this for us so that you can take it home with you and read it. Um, P S B A has changed a great deal with the, an eye toward making it better for the member entities and sort of keeping up with the digital age. And this is like the first year when all these changers have come together and are being, um, manifested at the conference, to which unfortunately, none of us are going. But I think it's interesting that all of us are willing to have a chance to vote on the officers. This has never been done before, and I've been a member of the, uh, Policy Review Committee with P S B A, of the nominating committee for, I think, something like twelve or fourteen years. And when I was a member of the nominating committee, I always lobbied for two things, trying to get more members, more of the, not the entities, but the members of P S B A to vote on the officers, and having some ownership of those officers. And secondly, to have more than one person slated for each position. And that latter one has been a matter of great controversy at meetings that I've attended. I think I was able to garner support for that maybe half the time. Well, yay, now they've got more than one person, um, nominated for the offices, and if you don't mind, I'd like to make some recommendations, and we're going to vote on that next meeting so that we can send in our, our, all of us, a one vote from all of us. And, uh, I'm not going to, um, recommend all of the candidates who are supposedly endorsed. Instead, on, for the president-elect, I would like to, um, recommend to you Mark Miller. If you read Mark Miller's information, you will see that he's been very much a part of all of the changes that have happened at P S B A. And I think it's important for him to be the leader of P S B A as all these changes are implemented. I know Bill LaCov very well, and I don't have any problems with him. I don't know Mark Miller as well, but I'm more impressed by what he's done to try to change P S B A and make it more responsive to its entity members. Um, for vice president, I would, uh, in, agree with the endorsement for Charles Ballard. Um, I think that you need to read what he says, and I, I think the first thing that he says, I believe P S B A has to change. If you don't want P S B A to change, don't vote for me. So I want P S B A to change, and I'm urging you all to join me and vote for him. Um, for treasurer, it's Norman Hasbrock from California, who has a whole list of things that he's done with and without money, and I think it's very impressive, and I, I would, um, encourage you to vote for him actually. Uh, the, the candidate who is the endorsed candidate for, um, treasurer is, there are two of them, as you will see. And, uh, you know, that's up to you, look at them, but I think that Mr. Hasbrock's, uh, list is more impressive and more, um, specific. And then there's the at-large representative for the West. We are in region three of P S B A. If you look at that little calendar, you're all given every year, you'll see the way the state is divided up into the regions, and we're region three. And I would recommend to you Daniel O'Keefe, uh, who is the, uh, endorsed candidate for that job. And I, I have nothing against the other woman, but once again, I think you will see that, uh, Mr. O'Keefe, uh, has been part of the changes in P S B A, and he is a master school board member, which is, uh, a presentation not easy to get, and I, uh, I like him for that office. And I'd like to talk about these things briefly, if you will read this before you come to the meeting next, next week, and then we'll do a vote, and then when we're finished, it's the majority wins. It doesn't have to be unanimous, but the majority of our votes are cast for one candidate, and then we vote for the whole slate when we're done. That's the way I understand it's going. If you have any questions, I think P S B A can give some answers. So.
Any other questions?
It felt like, um, oh, this one's interesting for some of us. Are governing boards of intermediate units, progressive technology centers, and community colleges also entitled to cast votes? And the answer is yes. So some of us should load the ballot box here. I'll bring it up with the E W C T C meeting, and soon you should bring it up with the IU.
So we're plunking?
Yeah. We're voting more than one.
Better than plunking. It's the, uh, early office. But really, there were some other questions about this issue of majority versus, um, unanimity, and, and that's answered here. And I'm sure I have to buy all the questions, but I have to say that I don't think that all of you consider this to be absolutely earth-shaking important. So, so if you're interested, ask me.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Transportation, Dr. Lawton?
Yeah, uh, please to announce, we have a meeting tomorrow, beginning of this Thursday. And, well, how did it go? First week of school, second week of school?
I think it went very well, and there's a lot of thanks to be given. I mean, there's, um, for the changer work, it was a normal startup, in our opinion. Um, we did our natural tweaking, the first week or two that we always did. Uh, the brand, two brand new companies, the new principal's abilities, I thought everyone, junior high principals did a great job, high school, but the elementary's are unbelievable. I mean, they're all here, there was not a lot of glitches, and we knew the routing was much better this year, and Merle scanned some rounds ahead of time, we all worked together to try to make this ready, and on the twenty-eighth, I have to be honest, even the administration, that's a day of, and you have a brand, two brand new bus companies, the first day of kindergarten, three inches of rain, trees are crossbreeding, roads collapsing, fire departments cutting roads open, county's cutting roads open, Mrs. Wire went to Montague, Mr. Prepper went to Fannely, Dr. Temper went to L E S, like the whole administrative team, Principal Acacia, Tremaine, they came to my office to, to assist. Everybody worked to get those kids home that day, and, um, Robin came up to make sure, we, we, we lost power in three buildings, we couldn't even get a local connect, call out of time, Dr. Salt stopped up afterwards, I mean, and that's nice when the whole administrative team realizes the, the state you're in. And, but for the first day of kindergarten, got on, and, um, and since then, I mean, the drivers have done a great job, and the people that I talked to, I know you talked to, are pressing the buses, they have intercom systems in where they talk to the buses, they have stereo radios in, they want to softly play music, like, it's nice. And, um, I, you're always going to get battles with people want some spots and things, that's a normal startup, and that's, I think the community would tell you the same thing, they probably try to tweak some things and help them as efficient as we can. And I just want to thank everybody in the administrative team because I love overwhelming my help, and I, I know we're all nervous going in, but I think it went very well.
Well, that's a good way to end it.
Thank you, Dr. Lawton. Superintendent's Organizations, Mrs. Swager. I'll also extend your congratulations, Mr. Swager.
I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Swager. Um, there are, uh, a couple of meetings this afternoon at, uh, six P M. Um, I'll note, a couple of good things are happening and, uh, moving on pretty well. A ton of new award selections to complete, all the teachers are using it, um, from what I understand from Robin and from Chad, is that the teachers are taking a more collegial attitude towards using things and teaching themselves, uh, in, uh, using it a little bit more effectively, but they're being used, I think we're having a good response back from them. Uh, the chromo pilot's taken off, I think that's in school now, we'll come through all of that. Uh, major thing though, I think we talked about earlier, and Mr. Prepper mentioned it earlier, was the E C A, uh, getting more students in the E C A, fire return, we have seven full-time in the elementary school now, and we have fifteen full-time in secondary and thirty-seven part-time in the, um, secondary schools as well. But that needs his money, and that's what we keep parking on, getting back to him. So this evening kind of thing, I think we're doing a good job with that, and I think the, you know, kudos to the teachers and staff and the teachers, uh, the administration that got out and run it, and, um, it looks good. So our next meeting is October eighth, sixth year, and these meetings will be attached, um, next month, Monday next week. Thank you, Ms. Swager.
I'd ask the board to move on to resolutions this evening, the first being resolution number thirty-eight. The first being resolution number 38, which is to accept resignations from personal care assistants Sally Andrew Jack, senior high school mathematics teacher Jason Myers, and senior high school Spanish teacher Cindy Parker.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We accept, we adopt resolution number 38. Thank you. Typically, we do not have hearing the visitors card at the committee, although we seem we are voting on two resolutions. If anyone from the audience would like to comment before we vote, please approach the podium and say your name. Okay, seeing, it has been moved and seconded, we adopt resolution number 38. Any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. And the second resolution I'd ask the board to move on this evening is resolution number 39, which is the appointment of Heather Ball as the Latrobe Elementary School teacher for K-6 at Step 5 Bachelor's plus 24 at $47,507. Effective date to be determined based on her availability. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolution number 39. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. And I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Heather. She's sitting in the back, you want to stand up, Heather?
Sure, hi.
Heather is presently living in Winchester, Virginia. She is a Greater Latrobe School District grad from a few years ago, and she has been working in the state of Virginia for seven years, correct?
Yeah, I moved to Westmoreland County, Virginia, and maybe back to Westmoreland.
When we first looked at her resume, it said Westmoreland County, and it took us a few minutes to realize that there's a Westmoreland County outside of Pennsylvania, doesn't it? So it was meant to be.
Yes.
Congratulations, Heather, welcome, and drive safely.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And then next week, a few other items that we will ask the board to note on is substitute teacher recommendations that are listed on your agenda. Be some supplemental position assignments, and if you have some time, if you haven't already, there is a quite lengthy list of all the supplemental positions for the district for the 2013-14 school year that is attached. If you would like to review that, we will be approving those next week. As well as hiring two AmeriCorps employees for the 13-14 school year, one for Badley and one for Latrobe Elementary. We were given two opportunities for AmeriCorps employees this year now from last year. These are both being identified for Title I schools. As well as the support personnel, people that are listed on your agenda for next week. Any other business to come before the board this evening? Seeing none, then we are go right on.
Dr. Moll, see the meeting here? Response from some of our legislators regarding the recent fact that this control back. PA Simmers, see what they think now after us meeting with the bureau for a year, complaining about the money for paying, not being used for education. See what they have to say now, in what course of action we might be thinking about paying. Okay, I'd be interested here.
Um, report that question.
Okay.
Are you aware that the person who used to be the chair of the Senate Education Committee, Senator McCollough, who is no longer in office, is now working as a paid consultant slash lobbyist for cyber targeted schools?
No. I would have to see the checkbook, I would have to go to the office, story of the writer on the check, you know, that's. Isn't that amazing? Two more accounts to be forgotten, right, two more accounts? Is that federal or county? Federal tax, maybe. So the feds, the feds are going in, so they can't handle that.
But there's something odd, because I had a patient come in, and she said, she had switched to cyber school, not student from here, and she said, and I was worried if it was a P.A. cyber school, but when I called, they said it wasn't a third school that the indictment is from. And I just didn't touch it, because at that point, I was just extremely nervous. But obviously, I wonder what it involved, their line is, because they said it wasn't a third, but it was.
And it is. Absolutely, yes. But there's some line they gave to, to, you know, make her feel comfortably that it wasn't a third school. And they are still advertising on the new news every day, and I'm all going.
We got 39 ships there? Got 39 ships to be subbed through? I think, the thing, the thing that we keep selling to our elementary parents that have kids enrolled in P.A. Silo, is the program that we offer here at Greater Pro, it's exactly the same as what the P.A. Silo. The only problem is, seeing the pencil today, was that we actually check to make sure they're actually online, doing their job, community taxes, and that's, that's the logic there. I think we can do okay in elementary school, the rest of them. Once we get them back in elementary school, I think we can get them back. This is unbelievable. Now that they've indicted former director, so that's good.
Oh, good.
Couple more legislators, good legislators to be invited.
Eight million.
I'm all being very.
That, this is not small, baby. Eight million.
It's more than that. There's a lot. It's only what they know about now.
Right. And, and the business manager also indicted.
Any other business speaking? Okay, we are adjourned.